So most importantly, I wanted to welcome everybody here. Again, my name is Roy Kessel. I'm glad you're with us today for the town hall meeting to discuss opportunities for funding and fundraising. I know that as everything is going on in today's world, events being canceled, all kinds of programs being canceled, the government in disarray. It's really been a challenging time for everybody to look at, look at the environment and try and figure out what the best game plan is for continuing their fundraising efforts, changing their fundraising efforts and trying to determine what other options there are for new fundraising initiatives in this time. And I know one of the struggles that we're going to discuss is how organizations are approaching the communication with their donors and with their stakeholders to determine what kinds of things can go forward and whether some of them should be on hold or some of them should be handled differently. And we've certainly got a great diversity of thought on here right now for this process. And I'm interested to kind of go through and hear from some of the different groups that have been impacted by that in terms of how they're approaching their fundraising efforts for their organizations. I know we've got people that have been involved for quite a while here and some people that are new for the first time. So what I'd like to do is as you go around and jump in, I'd love for you to just do a quick introduction and tell us your name and organization and where you're from. And then let us know what types of initiative you're working on and how that's really impacted, what's going on for your organization. I probably will just call people out unless there's people who are willing to jump in. I want it to be an open forum and a discussion. Anybody want to lead things off? Otherwise, I can be like the law school professor and just start calling on individuals that I know will be happy to share their insight with us.
Oh, Roy, I'll jump in if you want.
Okay.
I'm John CEO. I'm the CEO of Rivals Media. We're a service provider for nonprofits. We have a unique fan engagement platform. Prior to the epidemic, we did fan engagement during live events to raise money for charity. Now that this has occurred, we are, we've really just transitioned into we're going to be gamifying esports. We're going to be gamifying concerts. In Arizona, the governor is still allowing us to golf. So we're actually doing a social distancing golf charity event on Monday with a bunch of former athletes, four of whom are tied to Chicago area sports, right? That will, that we will televise and create a gamification. First thing that I've noticed with all of the conversations and we've talked to a bunch of teams, philanthropies and charities is getting awareness is probably more important and getting the messages to what you're doing during this epidemic is critical because there's a lot of sponsors and corporations that want to get involved from a corporate social responsibility perspective. And it's a great time to grow your database of donors. If you get a small percentage of actual donations, but you're growing your database, they're going to remember what you did for the next few years and how you tried to make an impact. So it's not all about selling, selling, selling. It's about just putting yourself out there to show that you're still making a difference. And if we can support these organizations and get them, people get new donors and potential donors to be aware, we know we can go back to them when this is over. But in the meantime, we still know we'll get a percentage of those people to donate even today if it's done in a GoFundMe charity campaign way, more than a direct ask as a donation. So that's sort of what we're seeing in the marketplace, Roy.
Yeah, I think it's interesting. There's really the two schools of thought of people that are putting all of their fundraising on hold and the other school of people that are going forward. And what we've seen in conversations with the different organizations is looking at how do they approach this process so that they can continue to communicate with their stakeholders and with their donors? And then what type of message should they be going into? Should it be, one of the recommendations has been the importance of just contacting stakeholders and thanking them and telling them you appreciate their participation. And depending on the type of program that you run, there's obviously different urgencies for different types of organizations from a fundraising perspective to look at how you can communicate that this is an unusual time, that this is a special time of need where there are so many more demands being placed on many of these systems and so many new programs that need to be worked out and developed. Because right now, you have a lot of kids sitting at home that aren't active, that aren't receiving the services that they normally get. So Tina, I'm interested to hear from you in terms of how you're approaching things in this time. No, Tina?
Oh, hi.
There we go.
Oh, um, I mean, at this, at this time, we've kind of put a lot of things on hold. You know, just like, for instance, we had a golf outing that we had scheduled for June 1st, but we just, you know, went through the process of postponing that to September. I just, I guess I feel like it's a tough time to ask people for donations outside of donating to something that's, you know, towards what's going on right now, you know, in the larger picture of, you know, people who are sick and frontline people who are working with the coronavirus. You know, stuff like, I just, I don't know. I think it's, that's kind of why I joined the call is because I was curious, like, what other people think in terms of like creative ways that we could keep things going. I liked what you said, John. What was the name, what's the name of your organization again?
It's Rivals Media.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a challenge for all organizations right now. And then what I've seen over the last couple of weeks is really a desire to, for everybody to catch their breath. I think that the first two weeks, people were really trying to figure out what it meant. I think pretty early on, it became apparent that anything, any fundraising events that were going on in April were going to be canceled. And I think that there was still a large hope that events in May or June would be able to continue. I think as times evolved, May is probably gone for sure. June is certainly in significant doubt, I think, for most organizations. And so you're going to see a lot of groups shifting things to the fall, which will create another set of challenges because you're going to have an even more full calendar than you typically have in the fall, which is always a busy time for fundraising as well. And so I know that a lot of the groups that we've spoken to, some groups are deferring their event completely until 2021. I think that there's other groups that are looking at how they can continue to fundraise in different ways. One of the challenges that we've always heard is that event fundraising is very time intensive and very expensive relative to the dollars raised for most organizations. And I'm interested to hear what other types of initiatives people have been working on and planning now as they look ahead for the next 60, 90 days, probably minimum, where there's really not going to be any opportunities for your typical types of events.
Roy, I'll jump in. My name is David Gorley. I live in Ottawa, Canada and in Ontario. And I am here a board member with the Ottawa Sport Council, which is a sport advocacy organization in the nation's capital, as I said, in Canada. And what we're doing right now is looking at new ways and initiatives to support Ottawa's amateur sport organizations as they struggle with COVID. And that's everything from looking at retaining membership to fundraising, to looking at how they can recover from COVID. Because as we know, a lot of amateur sport organizations all over the world rely heavily on volunteers, volunteer management. And I think with all the social distancing, physical distancing, whatever we're calling it as it evolves, and I think we're looking at a long-term impact. I don't think there's going to be a turnkey where we're all just going to go back to normal overnight because government tells us to. And our view at the Ottawa Sport Council is that sport, recreation and leisure provides us that opportunity to reengage back into mainstream society. And we want people to see that as an opportunity. And amateur sport organizations have that capacity. So I just wanted more just introducing myself, talking a little bit about that opportunity as we see it. Communication is so critical right now. If you're a sport commission or a sport council, what philanthropic tools and best practices can you provide in the COVID type of environment? And how can we look at those issues over the long term and really reinvesting in sport, physical activity? We see so much collateral being put on social media now about what can people do, especially with kids, young kids who are cooped up at home, who are feeling isolated from school and their classmates. What physical activities can you do in the home? And we're seeing some great best practices that really promote sport. And promoting sport puts dollars hopefully into organizations because philanthropists will see that opportunity and that potential over the long term. So appreciate you doing this. I know that Canada was represented at your summit. I believe that was a few months ago.
Last year, Sammy was there. I think Sammy's on the call, right? Or she, she was signed up, so hopefully she'll jump in here soon.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. There you are. So tell us about what you're working on, Sammy, from the Olympic Committee side.
Sure. So obviously, we've had a postponement in the games, which has changed a lot of execution stuff for us. You know, we were going to bring donors as part of their gift to Tokyo, which is just a postponement. So their gift is still there. We still think we can solicit people at this point because, you know, in our case, our athletes need the money now more than ever. So we think that we're appropriate. We can still, you know, talk to donors and things like that. But the biggest thing we're focusing on right now is probably stewardship and communication with our donors and our board and leaning on our board where appropriate to go after the right people.
Right. Well, I think it's interesting to hear from the different types of organizations that are out there and as well as people like John that are with Rivals Media that are finding and creating innovative ways to raise money for different organizations. I know, Vinay, you've got some programs that you've been working on and some tools that you're making available to people through the end of the year. So love to have you share that information.
Yeah. Yeah. So hi, everyone. I'm Vinay. I work for a company called Up Metrics. And we help nonprofits and funders with impact analytics and telling your story through data. So there's a handful of folks on the group, on the call here that we're, you know, actually been working with. So glad to see some faces. And my colleague Laura is on the phone too. She's new and in our, representing our East Coast sort of presence. And so something we're doing through the end of 2020 is we're launching what's called Up Metrics Lite. And in response to the COVID outbreak, we're offering this platform for free to any nonprofit that would like to use our platform in a self-service manner. But the main thing about it is it provides a platform and a public impact profile that allows you to raise additional funds for your organization. And what it does is it ties key metrics that you post to your impact profile, helps you tell a little bit of a story about what you're doing and how you're doing it. And then really touches on this idea of, you know, data-driven or smart philanthropy. There's a lot of you know, I'm the call, fundraising and philanthropy is changing right now. And this is hopefully going to help you build some capacity in how you ask for funds and where you do it in a different manner. So yeah, so we've actually launched sort of the beta of that platform this week. And then next week, the plan is to send it out to the masses. And Roy, I'll work with you to get it out to the group here. And if you have any questions, you know, we would love to support your group. There are no strings attached. It's a resource that we're offering to anyone that we can at this time to help get through a very tough time for everybody. So.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been challenging. And I know that as people look at the different things that are coming up over the course of the last couple of weeks, every day, the rules of engagement are really changing. And I think one of the struggles organizations have had over the last few weeks is getting a handle on how can we really plan anything? Because we don't know what this end horizon was, right? Two weeks ago, you know, like University of Wisconsin called off classes three weeks ago. So three weeks ago, they were told they were going back to school on what would have been, you know, basically next Monday. Clearly, that's not happening. Almost all colleges have canceled for the rest of the semester. And when you start putting together larger scale events and investing all of the different amounts of money and resources that are in that, there's very significant challenges to continuing to fundraise in this environment and then also to communicate with the different organizations. Alicia, are you willing to jump in for a minute and talk about kind of how the challenges you had at Project Play in Western New York? I know we had big plans for this past weekend with a couple of large-scale events. And then how you're communicating with the organizations that are under your umbrella?
Yes, definitely. So I'm Alicia Contreras. I am representing Project Play Western New York. We are purely funded out of Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation, which is based in Detroit. So we are a funding source as well as we are part of a billion-dollar spend down. So in 2035, our spending is completely depleted. And so our whole mission when we started in 2017 is to pretty much leave Western New York and the youth sports community better than when we first got there and to build all the capacities of youth sports organizations. So for us, we run a lot of events. So it was really hard because last week, we were supposed to have two major events, bringing in national speakers and about 500 people and attendees. So obviously, we had to cancel that. And then we did push it to next year, March 2021, just due to the fact that we didn't know what November would look like, as well as we weren't sure what other organizations would need help after summer. Because we aren't sure what summer is even going to look like for us about noise either. And right now, we've been talking with Wilson Foundation a lot of what the legacy funds that we have. Because our funding is actually supposed to go out next month for all of our grantees. And now we have to redirect that of who needs a funding right now. And also what the spring sports and sports sampling is going to look like. So we've just been communicating with all of our grantees due to the fact that a lot of the grant-making is going to be changing. And we've been trying to actually give them some sources of funding through volunteer work with like Meals on Wheels and just helping the community with social distancing as well. And then just pretty much trying to gather as many resources as possible from around the country to give to them so that they can still do some sort of professional development with their coaches or with the organization as a whole. And we're just like everyone else, just trying to figure out what's the next steps going to be. And then we've just been trying to improve our social media presence a lot with giving more activities and throwing out what everyone else is doing around the country and the globe, trying to get, keep kids active. Because our main demographic that we focus on is 13 and under youth sports.
Great. Thank you for sharing. I know it's always interesting for the groups to get perspectives from individuals that are with some of the grant-making foundations and support. And one of the questions that we often see is, in a time like this where there's these urgent needs and demands, what type of additional requests and funding is there? Will, if you're willing to talk to that in terms of what types of requests you're seeing at Susan Crown from different organizations, given this crisis? Thank you for turning your camera on too. That's always great to see the speakers.
Sure, I'm happy to do it while I'm talking. So we, we've been thinking about this a lot. And we're in a bit of a different situation just because we aren't actively funding in sports yet. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Bo McMenney, and I'm the Senior Communications Associate at the Susan Crown Exchange, which is a private foundation based in Chicago. So we are not actively funding in sports directly yet. We're expanding into sports from our current portfolio in SCL. But those plans have pretty much been put on hold until probably the fall. But we have received a lot of requests related directly to COVID from our current partners in digital learning and SCL and in tech. And what we're seeing is that everyone we fund that's a direct service partner has paused their programming to comply with social distancing guidelines. And they're struggling with maintaining relationships with their young people while also addressing the mental and physical and economic well-being of their program participants and their staff. And their biggest concerns are staff salaries, or a huge one, are transitioning to virtual programming when they are no longer able to offer programming in person and recuperating fundraising lost from events, which a couple of people alluded to earlier. So we've been talking to a lot of our nonprofit partners, as well as a lot of foundation partners and other actors in the space. And where we're kind of arriving is that we need to be thinking about not only immediate relief, but also near term in the next 30 to 90 days, as well as long-term responses to the economic fallout from the COVID crisis. So the commitments we made are we made small general operating support grants to our current direct service partners. So we went back and forth between offering funding to transition to virtual programming and general operating. And we determined that general operating really was the biggest need for the nonprofits we were serving. But then we would offer just kind of general, general advice, support, resources as our partner is transitioned to virtual programming while they're still complying with social distancing and supporting them as they implement virtual experiences, expand access to technology for the people they serve, offer online professional development and all the other kind of transitions that they're going to as they, as they switch from in-person to online. Does that answer your question, Roy?
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thanks for sharing that. I think in a similar vein, I'm interested to hear Julie McCleary wrote that she's with the Kane County Play Equity Coalition in the Seattle area. And obviously, Seattle is one of the first hotspots that's out there. Julie, I'm wondering if you could share with us what you're seeing with the organizations in your network and how they're going about the process of continuing to fundraise as they're going through this, this time.
Sure. Hi. All right, I'm going to turn on my video, but okay, I'm just getting up. Okay. Hi, everyone.
We're all casual, just for any future events that we have. I expect hoodies, sweatshirts, hats and pajamas are fine too. So.
All right. Yeah, so we represent about 60 organizations in the Seattle area. I would say about two-thirds are direct service providers in sports and outdoor recreation. And I think we're seeing, we've seen a lot of, as everyone said, canceled fundraisers move to virtual fundraising or just postponed, you know, our biggest, the biggest thing that we're doing right now is trying to understand how we can best help our, our members. And there's a lot of philanthropy going on in our region, but it is not directed towards our, towards this space. It's directed towards, as somebody on the call said earlier, more, you know, basic needs. So shelter, for, obviously for good reasons, food, you know, employment for people really directly impacted. And so we're trying to understand how can we leverage our coalition, our collective, and tell the story about why we need to support the, the sports and recreation field so that when we can go back, we have programs for kids to go back to. And that's really what we're hearing from our partners is that they're laying people off, especially those who are reliant on any fee for service. So I would say probably about half our groups have laid people off and are just really struggling to understand how to stay afloat until they can reopen their doors and provide, you know, provide direct services again. So we don't have an answer yet. We're trying, we work with the pro teams in our area, all of them on some other projects. And we're trying to orchestrate them to do something collectively on behalf of Play Equity and the sports area. But we haven't, we haven't gotten fully their attention yet. Because obviously, they're also, you know, involved in putting out fires. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you for sharing. I think it's, Julie raised a lot of good points. I've been speaking to a lot of different organizations over the course of the last few weeks. And the issue of laying off staff has been a significant concern. Most of the programs that are funded and raise money to provide programs that are not fee-for-service, right? They're, they're supporting communities that don't have the resources. They're often working with kids where that program is a significant source of their involvement of support for, not only for athletics, but for school. Maybe be a place where they get some of their meals that they're not able to get at home. And, and these organizations now are really in a position where they cannot support their athletes with those services. There might be things that can be done virtually. There are some really innovative training programs and mental skill development and other things that are out there right now. We continue to add as we find things to our COVID-19 resource page. Let's be clear, it's not at all about any medical research or resources. This is entirely things that are helpful to this type of community and this network, ways that you can engage your, your athletes or participants, opportunities for, for training and webinars, skills for your board of directors and your staff. So that page, if you've got resources or if you, like Vinay, are part of a company that's got an offering that is supportive of organizations in our network, please let us know and we'll be happy to promote that in our weekly newsstand and our monthly newsletter, as well as on our social media and on our COVID-19 page. Darren Sudman, if you're willing to jump in. Darren's with Simon's Heart and has done a lot of great work putting together heart screenings for youth athletes. And he's putting together a webinar that we're going to be hosting in a few weeks. But Darren, in terms of fundraising, tell us about how this has impacted you and what some of your strategies are as you go forward with this process.
Sure. Thanks, Roy. Good morning, everybody. For, you know, for us, we're not doing any fundraising because I think, I think it's tone deaf for us. You know, we, we raise awareness about sudden cardiac arrest in death in children. We started the organization after my son died. So I'm very tuned in to how personal and painful a loss can be and how a cause can, can come out of it. But even in a time like this, I recognize that my cause is not the pressing cause of the day. And that while there probably will be some kids who die from sudden cardiac arrest during this time, there's going to be hundreds of thousands of other humans that die from COVID-19. So not that, not that it's not important, it's just not the issue of the day. So we've really decided to take a step back and not fundraise. However, I heard some other people mention that in a way, you know, this kind of presents an opportunity for a cause like mine and maybe some other people, which is to deal with the things that I don't like doing or that I shove in a drawer because I'm moving 1,000 miles per hour. So for us, we've been doing a lot of email list cleaning. So for us, we've been doing a lot of email list cleaning, been going through LinkedIn, which I'm really good at making new connections on, but not really fostering those connections or remembering the guy I worked with 12 years ago I've been connected with, and I have no idea what he's up to. So I call it a lot of housekeeping stuff. But having said that, I think that there's also causes, some of which I've heard online today, that could mobilize their constituents, their supporters, and fundraise. You know, if you, if you represent a lot of student athletes and social sports, you could mobilize them to raise money for restaurants or healthcare workers. So I think there are ways for us to engage our constituents and supporters. We just have to be very sensitive so that we don't come across as tone deaf. Because I think people are going to remember how we all acted during this time.
Yeah, there's no question about that. And I think the issue on the tone and how this approach has to play out there is something that's important for everybody to consider. I'm interested from a professional team perspective, Cassidy, if you're willing to share with us some of the work that the Colts are doing and how you're approaching the community and what types of requests for support you're receiving during this time.
Hi, yes, I can definitely touch base on that. Sorry, hold on, let me try and get my video up. Sorry, I'm out, are kind of in a sun port, so it's hard to see me right now. But we are, I'm the Community Relations Coordinator for the Indianapolis Colts. And so kind of a few steps we've just taken from our standpoint would just be, we've started a webpage on our website as just a way to direct people to resources that we may have going on in our community and different organizations that either you could reach out to, either to donate if people are looking to donate money, and just ways to help, ways people can stay engaged in our community when during this time and a lot of things aren't happening to stay engaged with. So just finding ways to do that. We've also, like some others have mentioned with social media, tried to be active on social media and just include ways, once again, just try and stay engaged and try to stay connected with everybody in our community as well. Those are some of the few things that we've worked on specifically. But as everyone knows, you know, it's changing every day. So we're just hoping that every day we can continue to brainstorm ideas and ways to stay engaged, connected, and help those organizations around our community that are, you know, truly doing amazing stuff right now during this time.
And I think that raises an important part for really both sides of the equation, which is there, the needs don't stop. And in fact, the needs may escalate in a time like this because we've got to create a new mechanism for delivering services. And I think that you've heard from Cassidy and from Will and from other groups that have some of those resources. It may not fit their normal box, but everybody's responding to this crisis differently. There's no formula for it. So as groups are looking for funding, I encourage you to be creative and reach out to places that you know align with the values and interests that you have. It may not fit their standard grant program or grant cycle or model of what they're doing. But the world is different than it was three weeks ago. And none of us have any idea how long this is going to last. And so we were, I was on the phone earlier with a professor at the University of Michigan, teaches a sports philanthropy class that I'm speaking to tomorrow. And one of their programs that they got funding for is really a grant exercise where the students evaluate grant applications and give out the grants. And so they're in the final stages of that process. And as they're looking at these applications that got down to the finalist level, their challenge right now is some of those programs will not be able to happen because they were summer programs. They were summer camps. They were different types of in-person delivery of services. And so they may have to go back and sort of scrap the whole evaluation process that they did and kind of bring everything back and either look for a new pool of applicants or look for a different program that can deliver services on a virtual basis. And until anybody's got a better sense of how long this is going to last, I think it's really challenging for us to identify what the rules are. And we've seen over the last three weeks, the rules are going to keep changing, right? If you would have told anybody here three weeks ago, we would have no sports, no March Madness, no Olympics, all the professional leagues canceled, the Masters canceled, PGA canceled. It's very difficult to believe that that's where we would be. But, you know, Howard Broadwin, I'd love to have you jump in and talk a little bit about what you've been seeing, because I know you've been on a lot of conference calls with different organizations and different groups in terms of evaluating what's going on and how they're planning to proceed. Oh, did we lose Howard?
There I am.
Oh, there he is.
Just turning everything on and, you know, trying to get also into life here in Los Angeles, where we've been locked down for a couple of weeks. So thanks, Roy. Yeah, I have to say, it's been, it's been great. I've been kind of getting on as many of these as I possibly can and crossing paths with Roy on a lot of these as well. And just seeing everybody in the sport for development community really kind of rallying together and finding ways to help each other. So I would, I would say what I'm seeing is a lot of collaboration, a lot of sharing of resources. If there are people out there who need, who need guidance on programming, how to do virtual programming, there's a lot of really good resource sharing going on out there. I've collected a bunch. I know Roy has as well. In fact, and in 20 or so minutes, the Aspen Institute has their webinar this morning on how, you know, how they're looking at programming in the space. So I would just encourage everybody to reach out to other programs and find out what they're doing. And then I was on the call on Friday with the folks at Up to Us. And hopefully, most of you are familiar with Up to Us, based out of New York, and kind of have kind of feet on the ground in a lot of spots in the country. But their network is really well-established for something like this. They do heavy work in trauma-informed coaching. And that's kind of the situation that we're in and certainly going to be coming out of and working with a lot of youth who dealing with this situation is going to really impact them. So I would encourage you, if you're not already part of the Up to Us network, to really, you know, get in touch with them and find ways to get involved. They're working on some resources as well. And I've been in touch with them about a possible fundraising campaign that will hopefully get funding out to them and then out through their network to individual programs throughout the country. And yeah, there's a few other things that are in the works that I'm hoping to, you know, kind of have a little more information on. As we do more of these webinars, I'll be able to share a little bit more. But I'm actually working on a campaign with the folks at Sport at the Service of Humanity, which a lot of you may have come across as well. They're very interested in finding ways to address the crisis right now from the highest of levels. For those of you who don't know, Sport at the Service of Humanity is a kind of a joint effort from the Vatican, the IOC, and the UN. It's somewhat of the remnants of the former UN Office of Sport for Development and Peace that folded a few years ago. But Sport at the Service of Humanity is looking to see what they can do to have some impact during this time and going forward. So we're in some discussions right now to figure that out. But, you know, I'm happy to be a resource and help out wherever I can. And, you know, big thanks to Roy for organizing all of this. And like I say, now is a great time. I think Darren mentioned, you know, the LinkedIn and the networking. Now is a great time to get out and do a lot of that. I've had probably two requests a day over the past two weeks from people that I have not met before in the sport for development community and setting up more calls to talk to them. And I think this is, you know, that opportunity to get out, meet everybody else in this network and see how we can all help each other. It's the only way we get through something like this.
Yeah, I think you raised some great points. Bob, did you want to jump in?
Which Bob are you referring to?
Bob Dickinson.
Let's see. Be happy to. I think you just wanted to see who had the best virtual background between you and I, Roy. Is anybody seeing me or hearing me? Okay, I'm Executive Director of Steam Sports Foundation. Our major project right now is raising scholarships for those primarily in the automotive and motorsport space. We're doing a summit this fall at the University of Georgia, and we're going to invite approximately 25 universities from throughout the southeast whose students are engineering majors. And the summit's being funded by OEMs, original equipment manufacturers, automotive manufacturers and suppliers donating to the scholarship fund. First year, so there are always challenges in any type of first-year event. But while everything was very well-received, the concept very well-received end of last year, beginning of this year, when we kicked it off, obviously, COVID has really thrown a real crib into fundraising efforts. So we target corporate social responsibility, community affairs, the foundations, a lot of these companies. And in reaching out to a lot of those, companies we've been talking to, they said, "Look, we love your event, but all those divisions are really kind of focused on something else right now, namely COVID. And there may not be enough dollars to go around to do this event this year." So in talking with the University of Georgia, we talk about various ways that we can maybe reconfigure this, realizing we probably don't need to make a decision until this summer, the event scheduled for October. But anything from, you know, turning it into a pure webinar for a day instead of a day and a half or even a half-day, just to kind of get things started, to maybe getting some of the participants who will be participating to do videos on why they've chosen to participate. The obvious source with some of the CSRs and community affairs foundations really kind of drawing up is to target recruiting. All the universities that we're inviting will be sending the university, sending students because the corporations that participate are going to have recruiting arms there as well. So part of the opportunity might be to convince a lot of those corporations to spend a lot of money and still need to spend money recruiting new talent instead of going campus to campus to campus to campus to perhaps come to this event when we will bring students to this event. And there is no fee for the event for the students and really no fee for the corporations either, so long as they donate towards the scholarship fund. So that's kind of where we are with it. We're reassessing a lot. We're going easy, as a lot of everybody else has expressed, simply because we know that COVID is absolutely the number-one cause right now. And I think just contacting people, thanking them, reaching out, fostering new relationships, like a lot of people have said, are really some key things that can be done at this point.
Thanks for, thanks for sharing, Bob. I think that, again, as you've heard across the board, there's really been a lot of, and continue to be a lot of changes. We don't know what the timing is going to be, which makes planning fundraising initiatives very difficult with people condensing messages and everything like that. Yeah, I've seen a lot of different recommendations over the course of the last few weeks. One has been that it's an even more critical time to reach out to your donors and to speak to them and communicate with them. Not necessarily to ask for money, but to explain to them how this COVID crisis is impacting your organization and let them know how you are reacting to the crisis because people want to see that you have a plan. And from some of the organizations that we've spoken to, when they've reached out and either had people making calls to their donors, sending email communications to their donors, what they found is that after explaining where they stand and what their role is, many of them are actually getting donations anyway because people are recognizing that the need is there and that the need doesn't stop. So even though you're not directly asking for money, what you are doing is you're right in front of them and you're talking to them. And again, that makes you top of mind. I saw something yesterday which basically said that there was, they're suggesting to keep the communication channels open, meaning empty. And I'm not sure I agree with that. I don't think that emails or letters going out impact individuals' abilities to communicate in crisis. This was an analogy somebody put out there of comparing it to cars on the road when an ambulance goes by and you pull over and make sure they can get through. At least as far as I'm aware, we haven't had any true capacity issues on emails not getting through or on mail not getting delivered. So I would fall on the side of continuing to communicate with your donors and making sure of that. There's some organizations that have put some resources out there that I can share, and we'll be putting up some of those on the site as well. In terms of how to address that process, because people are uncomfortable when they don't know what to expect. And giving your constituents a sense of what your plan is, even if your plan isn't fully defined, letting them know what steps you're taking to try to understand the marketplace and try to understand what is going on in the world for your organization, that gives them some comfort as opposed to kind of going dark and not hearing from you for 30 or 60 days. And then when this situation starts to lift a little bit, maybe that's when you contact them and then they're going to go, "Wait a second." You know, I should have been hearing from them sometime over the last three months in some form or fashion. And again, it doesn't have to be a direct solicitation. But many of you that work with organizations that are continuing to solicit, whether it's sponsorships, whether it's major gifts, other things of that nature, it is a challenge, and you can't abandon that process because many of those cycles, especially on the sponsorship and major gift side, take significant amount of time and effort to cultivate. They're not one conversation results. And so you've got to continue to communicate with the sponsors and identify what they're looking for. They might have a sense of their timeline. Depending on the type of business they're in, it may or may not impact their ability to commit to a sponsorship. Many organizations are continuing because they know that their business is not going to be impacted dramatically. But when you look at how many industries are completely shut down, how many businesses are in the world of uncertainty, how many people are out of work, it's a very challenging time to go and ask for money. And so if you're going to do that, I encourage you to be mindful. Feel free to reach out if I can be a resource to look at some of the things that you're doing or talk through some of the ideas that you have on that level. But I encourage you to make sure that the lines of communication stay open. And for those, you know, like Will and Alicia and others and Julie that have the resources to help these groups, I encourage you to let them know if you're able to make additional resources available or if you're able to create a, call it, emergency fund where maybe there are some services that they could keep going, but their traditional fee-for-service model won't work or their funding won't work to keep all of their staff employed because it's very hard to get well-trained staff and staff that do a great job interacting with youth and sports. And once you've got them, you may have to lay them off. But again, now you're at jeopardy of not getting them back. So it may set you back significantly more than 60, 90, or 120 days. I know we're coming up on, with a little less than 10 minutes left, I want to make sure that everybody's got an opportunity to jump in here that hasn't had a chance to participate. Anybody else want to share what they're doing? Ken, I know you've want to connect with a lot of the people that are on here. I'd love to hear what you're doing.
Yeah, so I'm based out of Fort Wayne, Indiana, and we're Turnstone. So we have a little bit more than just sports. We have sports, we have therapy, childcare, all for people with... We have sports, we have therapy, childcare, all for people with disabilities. So, we're serving a wide range of people from birth and beyond. But so, we've decided, as soon as we heard that this was coming down, one, we had to cancel one of our biggest events, our casino night, which was the weekend that this kind of all went down and we had to cancel everything. So, we did a virtual or an online auction of all the items that people could have done and then told people that we would do a game night once we are all released and free from our homes. But what we did is our staff is all still technically working, but they're setting up virtual turnstone. So, you can go to our website right now, anybody can, and they can see videos that our fitness instructors have put together for people to do at-home workouts. Our childcare teachers are reading stories and doing a lot of, like if they sing a song every day when they have like circle time, the teachers are singing that. So, the parents can kind of set up and still have some of those types of schedules for their kids when they're at home. Our adult day program is doing activities and trivia games and things like that to keep our clients engaged. And then all of our staff are calling their clients and connecting with them on a regular basis. So that, you know, we can check on them, make sure they're taking their medicine, make sure they're having social interaction. If they need groceries and they don't have anybody to go get them, how can we get them the resources? One of our staff members utilizes a wheelchair every day. He's doing a at-home fixes for things that might be wrong with your wheelchair and how you can fix a wheel or something that might be wrong. So, doing videos like that for our clients has been really great. And then we're setting up times through Facebook where people can do a live yoga class, they can do a live fitness class, they can listen to Storytime, those types of things. And then we're offering all of those services out to all of our sponsors, our donors and those types of people so that they know that we're there for them and if their client, their staff need anything, we're available to help them out as well. And looking at how we can do that, but then our staff on top of that is also doing a peer-to-peer giving campaign right now. And just as a way to say, you know, "Hey, if you have any dollars that you're wanting to, you know, to donate, we're available." And we're not asking for big dollars, we're looking at five, 10, 15, $20 donations, nothing, you know, that's going to rock the boat, that's going to break the bank for people. Here in our community, a lot of people are still working. So, that's a bonus for us. We do, you know, obviously our restaurants and those types of avenues aren't, but a lot of people are still working and looking at it. And we just kicked that off on Monday with a, a minimal, I mean, our goal is 25,000, which isn't huge, but it's not small either. But when you have 70 people trying to reach that goal, it's attainable. So, we're doing a lot with what we have, I guess.
Well, congratulations. I commend you on, on taking all of those steps. I know it's, it's a challenge to find ways to keep people engaged and everybody's still in a feeling out process and timeframe in terms of what they're, what they're able to do.
And I think your voice is starting to change, big boy.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth?
Sorry, that was my dog.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Roy, I wanted to throw one thing out there real quick for everybody on this call. A lot of people aren't looking at the fact that a lot of on-premise sponsorship dollars are now back at the corporations. So, think about in your local markets, any events that have been canceled where there were corporate sponsors committed, where trying to switch some of that money that's now not going to go to those events into new fundraising campaigns from a corporate social responsibility perspective is just another avenue. We're, we're going out with people for some of our campaigns and really tying the right sponsors based on who's involved. But there, there's an awful lot of companies that really don't know how to engage with corporate social responsibility. So, today's a good time for 10, $25,000 GoFundMe campaigns. I, I really like those size of campaigns and there's really no limit to what you can do. And now that GoFundMe has GoFundMe charity, the fees are a lot lower than they're, they are on some other platforms. So, that's, we're, we're using that platform and using those type of campaigns. And once you have it story-boarded, go, go talk to 10 sponsors to just say, even if it's not money, if they can't write a check, leverage their social media in their customer database. You know, for us, getting Travis Matthew to go out to all of their, their customers and giving some surprising in-kind donations away is more important than them writing a $5,000 or $10,000 check in many instances and has a bigger impact.
I think you're right. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity for being creative right now. Again, the rules are unwritten, we are at a blank slate, there's no formulas for how sponsors are making their decisions, how grant makers are making their decisions. It may be more challenging with, with individuals, but there's a lot of people who are, are still able to earn their income from home. And so, they are spending less money frankly because they're locked up. So, they're not on the go, they're not at parties, networking events, fundraisers, other things like that. So, there, there are dollars that are out there. I think it's just a, a question of being mindful of who you're approaching and, and how you're approaching them to make sure that, as a few people have mentioned on here, that you're not tone deaf in terms of understanding who your donors are. You know, people that are laid off, on furlough, unemployed, right? You've got to be very careful that those are not the people that you're going after. But in, in many professions, with today's technology, a lot of my friends that are attorneys, they're, they're busier than ever dealing with some of the fallout of, of this crisis. And so, their income and, and work really isn't being impacted in that same way. Some of the teachers that are out there are able to do it. They've had a, a big stress having to restructure their whole curriculum and, and continue to teach, but from an employment perspective, they're, they're still working. So, again, I want to be mindful of time. I want to thank everybody for, for coming on here. I really appreciate your participation and I hope that you'll come back and join us for some of the other webinars. Keep looking at that webinar page, we're adding things constantly. We're going to be programming through the end of May at minimum. And as this goes on, we'll go for as long as this crisis lasts. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Roy.
Have a great day.